Okay.
Another one of your personalities, Ellen.
I'm anxious to see this.
Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. There's also an automatic external defibrillator that's available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Health Center Board of Trustees, and I'll turn that over to Commissioner Duda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items on our agenda, and one of them we will not be able to do this morning, the update on the HMA recommendations. There's nothing to update yet, and I was asked if we could do this following up. Anyhow, two weeks from today, we will have another trustee meeting, and we will have the update on HMA recommendations at that time. The second item -- oh, we should still do roll calls, shouldn't we? Okay. Ellen's going to do her best imitation of Burl this morning.
Trustee Borgeson, trustee Boyle, trustee Kraft, trustee Morgan, trustee Rogers, trustee Tusha, Chair Duda.
Thank you. Present. The second item on the agenda, the one that we will be taking up today, is a resolution approving animal policy and procedure at the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center. And you all have a copy of that. This is something we've been working on for quite a while. We've had a bit of discussion on it, and we do have the final product now for the board's consideration. Any questions or comments? If anybody from the public has any thoughts on the policy, this would be the appropriate time to be sharing those. Good morning, Mr. Kimber.
Good morning.
I have one question to ask, and this is directed to the commission and to Sheri, and she is the clinical director over at the mental health. Um, excuse me. Item number four, section, sorry, section four, paragraph C and D. It says CMH will provide and identify an area where the food and water will be stored. Omar will only eat his food around me. I guess it's just a sense of security. And I am wanting to know is what will the community mental health do if that is the only way that he will eat his meal? Eat his meal or drink his water? And that's why I'm directing to you guys and to Sheri both.
Please.
I think what how I'm reading that is that it will just be stored. When it comes time to feed, it sounds to me like you would be able to be with Omar when it's time to feed, but for storing where, you know, not in your room, but in a place that's appropriate, and then when it's feeding time, you would be able to get the food.
Well, he eats throughout, excuse me, he eats throughout the day. I mean, there's really no set time that he eats. I mean, that's just him.
Yeah. Um, well, I would, that may be something we need to talk a little bit more about, but it would be something that we would have to work on.
Do you have thoughts on that, Sheri?
Sheri Glassnow, Community Mental Health Center. The storage of the food will be kept with, we have a room where we keep all clients' items stored for safety, but as Mr. Kimber and I had discussed previously, he will be allowed to have bowls for water and food in his room as long as they're non-breakable.
Oh, okay.
So that won't be a problem.
All right, cool.
Thank you, Sheri.
Another item on this thing, too, is Omar goes out throughout the night. I mean, there's just really no set time that he has to go out. How will Sheri's staff be able to do that? Let's say he has to go out at 10 o'clock at night. How will the staff do that if they are, you know, just sitting in, sitting in the office, basically, book, you know, just BSing, talking, and I go up to them and say, hey, I need to get my stuff to take my service animal out? Will they be able to accommodate me, or will they just continue to make me wait?
In item G, it does say that. It does say they'll accommodate.
Okay.
And on item G, it does say it will accommodate your service dog toileting and by escorting the inpatients and their service dog to the designated toileting area.
I understand, Mary Ann, but I have seen, when I was over there the last time as an inpatient, some of the staff members, they only have two staff members on the floor out in the common area at a time. And half the time, those two staff members that are out there are just basically watching TV, and then sometimes there's only one person out there. How are they going to do that? Are they going to have extra staff on?
Well, I think it's going to be, you may request it, but it may not happen. Now, we've talked about this before in terms of patients, and it may not be at the click of a finger that it happens, but I will guarantee you that if you put the request in, they will follow through and get your Omar out to toilet.
Okay.
They won't want it happening on the inpatient.
Of course. And if there's another patient that does, let's say that does make a complaint about him being up there, how will the staff members address that individual and say, hey, Mr. Kimber does have to have his service dog, it is a policy?
Probably just like that.
Okay, and if that person still wants to talk to a unit, like a unit manager, supervisor on duty, will the staff, the managers and supervisors be told, hey, I'm sorry, this is coming, this came down from the commission, that we have to follow?
They'll, we'll talk about the policy, yeah.
Okay. And another thing, too, while I have the board's attention, and I think that commissioner knows about it from the last time I was here, yesterday afternoon, I contacted an attorney, and I was told, due to the matter that disregards, I am allowed because the communication between the county attorney's office and the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, due to the fact that I have to go out next month and do my annual update on my registration, that I am privy to that information in case there is an officer that has not been notified that he is allowed to come with me when I go down 1616 Leavenworth. And I have contacted Teresa three or four times requesting it. The last time I requested it, it was in front of this commission, and I have still not got it, that I was, that it was promised to me.
What information are you talking?
The, between the...
Oh, you're looking for reassurance that Omar will be allowed to go with you when you register?
Yes, sir.
Um, I think that ball is in my court, and Diane did help me research that, but it would probably be better if you worked directly with me.
Well, then, why haven't, okay, why haven't I received any information? Why haven't I gotten it? And why did I have to go to an attorney to find out if I had legal rights to that information?
Well, we're doing a lot of things, we're really kind of bending over backwards.
I understand, sir.
Trying to accommodate you, and...
I'm just trying, I'm just trying not to have any problems when I go...
I appreciate that, and so are we. And I have been told that we will make sure, but I'll try to get you something in writing. But I'm saying it's better to work probably through me than through our attorney. The attorney works for us, and I work for you. So if we can get you something in writing showing that, we will do so, but work through me on that.
Well, I'm going out, excuse me, on October 2nd to do my registry paperwork.
All right.
Because I try to get it done as soon as possible, so I don't have to deal with those guys, you know, because it does get a little time-consuming and everything.
All right.
And that's why I try to get it done the first part of the month, so I can, you know, have the rest of the month, so I don't have to worry about it.
I will be in contact with me, and I'll get you the latest on whatever we've got, on, you know, what kind of reassurance I can get you that it's okay on October 2nd for you to take Omar with you. I'm not sure what more I can do for you at this point, Robert.
Okay.
We do have trustee Boyle had a comment here.
Well, I could be wrong, but it seems that as long as the animal has the proper, I guess identification is what I would call it, on harness, that's what's expected. When a dog enters a building, people look for that ID to see that it actually is a dog that is an assistance dog. And I don't, does Omar have that kind of a...
He has a thing on his collar.
Right.
It's basically the same thing that I have, that I carry with me in case something like this was to go down.
Okay.
And, you know, not a lot of people sees it.
Well, I wonder whether, it seems to me like it was supposed to be something that's a harness that's visible from a person looking down.
Well, not, well, see, technically speaking, by Americans with Disabilities law, and I looked this up, Commissioner Boyle.
I'm sure you did.
The owner does not have to have, by federal law, a vest. That's just...
Oh, right. Oh, okay.
And, you know, I'm on a very fixed income.
Sure.
I mean, I barely make it by each month because of my rent.
Well, let me ask you this question. Excuse me for interrupting. If the dog is, goes into a building and someone stops you, are they able to, without any problem, see that identification on the dog saying that it's...
Sometimes they don't even look.
Okay, but if they stop you, are they able to see?
I just tell them, I've had that problem in two places here in Omaha.
What happens?
Well, first of all, one of them I had to call the police on.
Oh, okay.
And the Omaha police officers will not do their job. They refer me to the FBI.
Well, let me ask, let me ask the legal people here, is there some way that a person, and we talked about this a little bit, we did, had communication, about whether or not a person who has a dog such as this could carry ID themselves that would...
Because this is the only...
Then show the, do you have anything to carry?
This is the only thing that I have that they can't see his.
What's that?
It's the same thing as him, but it's a metal copy.
It's what?
It's a metal copy of his tag.
Looks like you could get out of paying a speeding ticket with that.
But I also have that, too.
And that, does that say that you're allowed to have the dog?
This is a, this is saying that he is a registered service dog.
Oh, well, that's the sort of thing that you would show them. If you have someone stop you, say, well, this is a registered assistance dog, and then show them that ID. I wouldn't show them the badge, that's a little intimidating, but...
Well, sometimes they don't, they don't even believe that card. They say it's, you know, I made it up.
Okay. Well, if that happens, there's, you know, I don't know what to say, but if you show the ID, it seems to me that anyone in a government office should let you in. Who issued that ID?
That was issued through the organization that I got the, his collar through. And also on the back of this card, it has, it says, United States Federal Law, the owner and his service dog are presenting this card voluntarily, is not required by federal law not to do so under Federal ADA Act of the USA FAA DOT, the service, this service animal and their, see, this service animal and their access to all public places and commercial carriers is protected under federal law. Any questions regarding ADA contact, call the Department of Justice.
Well, that should be, that would make me let him in. So, I mean, I think I would show that to a person if you have trouble. I don't know what to say. That's someone who's looking for an argument, I think.
Yeah, but Commissioner Boyle, half the time that I went into businesses here in town, and they haven't seen his thing, or they've seen this, they're like, well, we still want you out of our store.
Oh, well, that's something else.
Right.
Not to do with the dog.
If I may, I would like to ask Diane Carlson for a little input here.
Thank you. Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator. With respect to the Sheriff's Department, I did talk to Chief Wheeler about this issue. He was aware of it. He was aware of you and your situation. And he assured me that he has told his staff that you are allowed to come in with your dog when you register, and he told me that if you have any problems with that, then you should ask for a supervisor, because everyone in that area will know that their policy is to allow you to bring your dog into the area that you need to.
Does that also affect 1616 Leavenworth?
I believe so, yes. Wherever you may need to go to register is, you know, you should be able to bring your dog with you into that area.
Okay. So what happens if I have to go to the courthouse? Do I still go through security like normally?
Even judges go through security.
Well, I didn't know, that's why I was asking. Because, you know, I don't want to have any problems when I go next, next month to do my paperwork, because I don't want to be charged with a failure to register because of you guys, of this, of this matter.
We have an agenda, Roger.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on the policy before the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion...
Adhere.
Motion in a second to approve and adjourn. Questions or comments? Ellen, would you please call the vote?
Trustee Borgeson.
Yes.
Trustee Boyle.
Yes.
Trustee Kraft. Trustee Morgan.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Tusha.
Yes.
Chair Duda.
Yes, and thank you, and you do a good imitation of Burl. You know, she's looking at stepping down here in a month or so. You might, you might have an opportunity here. Thank you. I turn the floor back over to the chair.
We will go to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, September 16, 2014, and item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, September 30, 2014, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Move on to resolution. There's two. Application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for denial by the county treasurer. An item E, approval of application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
There is a presentation, real property assessment cycle, property valuation and valuation protest, language and procedural clarification correcting 2014 errors in the
My name is Monty Bowman. My company, Abrus, we work commercial, industrial, real, and personal property taxes for small businesses generally. This cycle, the reason for this, I've been up here a few times over the last few years. We ran into a few problems during the assessment cycle. This kind of came to a point after new legislation was passed where referee hearings were being held in person, face-to-face this year. There was a confusion which caused a lot of evidence that was being presented during the referee hearings not to be considered, because there had been, the property protest forums still said that you could not present any additional evidence after you filed your protest, even though the law has changed in January to reflect the fact, and the Board of Equalization's own procedures, Rule Number 7 specifically said, any information pertaining to your properties could be used during the referee hearings. Starting with the assessments, the last assessment, basically where the cycle starts now, is it starts in October, it ends December 31st. Causes a little bit of a confusion, because you have two months of the year where people are still waiting for profit and loss statements and so on. A lot of people would be using those for an income argument, specifically the hotels, because that's what we've been informed from the assessor's office is the method they're using for calculating their value. During last year's assessment, two specific areas, we presented information for you to look at, had a reassessment of markets built as market or built as retail space. What this ended up causing was certain pocketed neighborhoods throughout Omaha took some drastic increases that we tried to explain to a lot of business owners that there's a burden-shifting rule that no matter how outrageous the increase, unless you could cast doubt on the assessor's numbers, there's not much that's going to be done about it, unless you go in and protest. About 90% of these businesses that are affected are the small mom and pops. They don't want to rock the boat, they're afraid they'll be targeted, or they don't have internet, so they don't even know that the notice was posted on the internet until they actually get their cards in May for the new value. So you have quite a few that may take advantage of the informal resolution hearings, which are now taking place in February. That also allows people on residential which never had that chance before. We have, I mean, the neighborhoods themselves, the two that I had just shown, given as an example, 16th and Lake, this is an area where the properties are all worn out. There's only two existing businesses of any kind. One's an actual grocery store, it's Chubbs. The only other business that's anywhere around there is not even a business, it's a church. The church utilizes one of the buildings on the corner that took a 410% increase. This is in an area where the last sale to occur about a year ago had one of the buildings sell for $3,500. There's, there's just nothing there. And this is the second time Chubbs has taken a drastic increase, while at the same time for a market, Chukobos went down on 24th and L Street. The rest of 24th Street, South 24th from there, all the way to Q Street, any of the older buildings that were built as retail found their values going through the roof from 100%, 3, 4, 500%. So all of your old town areas, South 10th, South 13th, Florence took a dramatic increase, all of Maple, Leavenworth, from 19th Street all the way to 46th Street. There is no correction. Most of these business owners do not even want to take and file a protest. We did take quite a few into informal hearings with the assessor's office. We had the assessors actually come back out and look at some of the properties where there were some very blatant errors on the record. One was the hotel, the Ramada Plaza on 72nd and Grover. That swimming pool had been gone for two years. They'd come out, took pictures. In the new property record files, it shows the swimming pool is gone, but when you'd look to the left page prior to where the pictures are, it still has the pool in good shape, valued at over $1 million. When Mr. Morrissey was questioned about this, he said, that really doesn't make any difference, because they're going to do it on a income basis. So another thing that a lot of businesses guard protectively are their profit and loss statements. They still did not have a problem releasing those specifically for those hotels, because they were at a negative. This one specific hotel took an increase from $5.5 million to $13.5, and then saw another increase the next year from $13.5 to $18.9 million. We took in information to show it was purchased in a normal arms-length transaction. We brought in all the profit and loss statements. We brought in the receipts where the swimming pools had been removed. The only thing that they had done was come in, bring the property back up to code. They moved the entrance of the hotel, which used to be the Holiday Inn, they moved it from Grover to 72nd Street, added a portico. That's now where the new lobby is. They took out the swimming pool, put in a rock garden. They gutted the old swimming, the old restaurant, and just put in another restaurant. Other than that, the convention center, the cocoa water park, none of that has been changed. It's in the same condition it was in for the last nine, 10 years. We took in pictures, we took in insurance reports, we took in all of the information that you would normally take in, which would affect the value of your properties. We saw only one out of, all of the ones take any kind of, any consideration to get the value lowered, only one out of all of them. We had talked to them about their subclassifications, and one of them, they were looking at service garages. And when they go after the service garages, they were catching three specific properties, which we did two of them on a protest, Zeitner, Brothers Trucking, and Nationwide Transportation. They are the same as Universal Trucking. Those three companies are a service garage for their own fleet. They do not turn a wrench for profit. We had asked for the classifications to be clarified. Two of those ended up being commercial service garage, one ended up being an industrial service garage, although three, all three of them identical. But yet, nothing was done as far as changing the classification, looking at them, trying to find out, how do you classify them? Because income basis is not going to work for those. We turned around and filed the protests in the month of June, and there on the protest forums, it basically says that any evidence must be included, as it was in all prior years, all-inclusive. You had to have all of your nuts in one basket at one time. With the informal hearings, and since we had just presented, spent a lot of time and money on the presentations we gave to the assessor's office to find out that if they did not use any of the information, that information was destroyed. So we had to recreate everything all over again for every one of the properties. That included appraisals done by certified appraisers right here in town. Citywide was one, Michelin Associates was the second one. So we put down our argument and the description of the property as we are supposed to in the property protest forums, then we went to the informal hearings. During those informal hearings, they specifically let us know as we began the hearings that none of that information would be taken into consideration. The very first hearing, we had dealt with a multiple commercial property which was located in Millard. We had an appraisal, which was done by Citywide. When everything was settled at the end of the hearings, that was the only one that was considered, added to the record, the appraisal was taken into consideration, and the value was lowered accordingly. The very second one we took in was an appraisal that was done by Michelin Associates for Mudra Construction on North 84th Street. Nothing given to that one whatsoever. So when we finally found out what happened, we spoke with Mr. Boyle, set up a meeting to try to find out if we could correct this to make sure that the mistakes didn't happen again next year. Mr. Morrissey was present. We had explained to Mr. Boyle that we had brought all of what would be considered great evidence during the informal hearings. We were scared to take and put all that back out there to have it thrown out again. We wanted to present it face-to-face with a referee to make sure it was given consideration. When he asked Mr. Morrissey, what happened to this information? How did they look at it? He just basically said, we gave it no consideration whatsoever. And we're going, okay, I don't, I thought that was the whole purpose of the informal hearing. And the legislature that started in February of 2011, which made this mandatory to take place in January of 2014, this was the exact issue that they were trying to address, because it would allow information that would reduce the costs on the amount of protests that would end up going to the Board of Equalization. This would also reduce the amount of protests that would end up at Turk. The initial cost, of course, would be a little bit higher during the informal hearings, and they had modeled this after Lancaster County, where in Lancaster County, they had over 7,000 informal hearings, but yet it ended up with only 500 of those that ended up going to formal protest. Now, I do not know what the numbers are, but if they were anything like what ours was, we ended up with 99% that had to end up going to protest. So I don't know why the information was not considered. They even came out and physically inspected some of these properties and still made no reductions in the values. We ended up filing, okay, after the informals, one of our clients decided they didn't want to have to even file the protest. They just said, well, we didn't get any kind of, they didn't look at our information, so one of them dropped out there. At the time of what occurred during the informal hearings, when we had to file our protest to Turk, going to Turk would give us a case number in 30 to 60 days. That would then be, notices would go to the property owner and would go to the county attorney's office. Normally, they would wait for it to go on the calendar for Turk before they would initiate confession of judgment. To resolve the problem, which occurred with mine, and I know it's probably occurred with quite a few other problem, properties, as soon as the case number is now assigned and goes to the county attorney, that is when we're trying to initiate the confession of judgment early, so that before the next tax bills come out, there's an opportunity to correct it yet this year. So far, what we've heard is everybody's in agreement to do that. We don't know anybody else who was affected, but I do know which ones of mine directly were affected. But two of my, two of the protesters would not file because fed up. They just, they just don't see where they're going to get any... They just, they just don't see where they're going to get any consideration whatsoever. So we've lost two more people on the protests that did not want to take and file to the state level. Now, all we're waiting for is, because when it comes to confession of judgment, normally that involves the assessor's office, which is the last thing that any of our protesters want anything to do with. They want their referee hearing again, where that referee has a chance to act as a neutral party between the assessor and the property protester. That's where we're going at now, is that there's a confusion in the language. The property protest forums need to be corrected for next year. The, the language has got to be more specific, that they are allowed to bring any of this information specifically to that referee. That referee is supposed to have that opportunity to look at this in an informal. He is your intermediary between them. If we end up back with the assessor's office in this confession of judgment, they lose that stage, which is a very important part of this cycle. That's, that's where our big concern is. We want these corrected for next year. Diane Badiotto does not need to come in and find the same kind of mistake occur. We're not necessarily pointing fingers. It's brand new, just needs to be corrected. The language has to be clarified a little bit better. But any of those mistakes where people did not get the referee hearings, they've got to have that opportunity to have it again. And they've, they've already reproduced evidence three times. They're paying again to get this thing just to the state level. That's $25 just to apply there again. These are not very big businesses. We have small mom-and-pops, the hardware stores along Cummings, over on Center and on South 24th Street. They're the oldest ones in the city, and they're even scared to go any further. There's old businesses along Farnham, all up and down Leavenworth. They're, they're, they're just, they're scared to go against it because they have not seen, when they're, when they're releasing what's very private to them for their information, their profit and loss statements, and they're, they're not given any consideration. They just, they get fed up and quit. And that's exactly what's occurring. Now, all of a sudden, there's businesses with 3, 4, 500% increases, and they're, they're going to close their doors. And what's been happening for the last five years is four, five years ago, there were 12,000 commercial industrial properties in Douglas County. That number's down to 9,000. At that time, they had over 2,400 businesses selling per year. That number's down to less than 500 per year. So it's really taken a hit on the mom-and-pop businesses, which is 85% of the businesses in Omaha. And we're going to lose more if this keeps up, because during the legislative hearings in February, the assessor's office did make mention that it would be a lot easier for them if people by neighborhoods would come in and protest that way. I agree, except for the fact they're not doing the protest, they're not doing the assessment that way. The assessment is a citywide. So now, all of a sudden, when you're looking for a retail, anything past 72nd Street going west, has a different classification because they weren't built as retail space. Most of these businesses are 90 to 130 years old. They're, I mean, that's, that's what, that's what got hit, all of these old markets.
So can I interrupt for one second, just so I'm staying on top of this with you?
Okay.
The, the issue that you want resolved for next Board of Equalization process is our form, being more specific about new evidence being able to be presented at the time of your informal hearing. Is that one issue?
That's one, and then there's one prior to that that I think needs to be addressed, and that is, what is the purpose of the informal hearings that's taking place with the assessor's office? That is an opportunity to take and reduce the caseload for you. And that's, that's very important, because that was the whole purpose of these legislative hearings, was giving people an opportunity to see if they needed to file a protest.
Right, okay.
So I think that's the first step that has to be clarified, what information and should it be given consideration, if it is good viable evidence.
Okay.
The second question is the form itself. That form must give them an opportunity to present their argument, describe the property in such a way, and this is what I had brought up before, is because you have to choose which argument you're going to take and use, whether it's income, whether it's comparable. You have to stick with that, you can't change that. But you should be all, the third step is, you have to be allowed to come in to the referee hearings with any information that is going to be pertinent to your protest.
Come into the referee hearing?
Yep.
All right, okay.
There's only one other issue that comes into play for this entire cycle, and we've explained the burden-shifting rule, which is what I explain to every business owner. And it says that we have to go look at what the assessor has on how did he come up with your number, so we know. We can figure out which basis it was, because once you can take apart that number, it'll give you an opportunity to show why those numbers are incorrect. This was an issue that I brought up three, four years ago. We have filed charges with the Attorney General's Office. We finally got some of those back December 13th, in which the County Attorney's Office, acting as representative for the assessor's office, basically stated that they have been supplementing the record that they give to the Board of Equalization, but they say that that information is only explanatory. They tried to also say that that information is not, there's nothing that you get in an assessment report that they say is not in the property record file. Now, at any time, we've been able to prove beyond a doubt that is incorrect. And if they want to, they can pull one specific property this year, which is the most blatant of all. It was for Johnson Brothers. They are on 46th and Leavenworth. In this specific situation, what occurred was we asked for the property record file, and what they ended up giving us was a screenshot of the POV. That's it. That's how they said they came up with the value. We got into the referee hearing, got a chance to see what the assessment report looked like, and there's comparable properties. So we started pulling the other assessment reports. They're nowhere near the same. It's completely different. We built our argument based on what was in the property record file, and what went in front of the Board of Equalization again this year, which we have found for the last four years, is completely different. And that's what's been our main argument, is because it's, they're, we thought that they would be doing an identical copy of the property record file, giving to the Board of Equalization, because that's what we're using. And it's not the case.
Okay.
So we're missing there, there's no narrative, there's no correlative section, and they say that as long as they use one method of value, they don't have to put those other sections in there. Even though in the profile, they're showing a cost basis for what it would cost, according to Marshall and Swift, for any of the specific components of your property. But then they're going to use one final approach to value. And normally, they've been using the income, and a lot of these is what they believe these businesses can get per square foot, for a lot of the retail and the market spaces. Hotels, they're still saying is on an income basis, but they're ignoring the profit and loss statements when we're providing them.
Okay. All right. I think I have it all.
Okay.
We'll work on that. And I, I apologize. I thought maybe if somebody from the assessor's office wants to respond, but I thought the property record file had been resolved, so.
Nope.
I apologize for that.
We've actually, we are waiting to complete our 2014, because we, we've been working on this, like I've said, for the last three or four years. This has been a problem I've been complaining about. I've finally got the information from the Attorney General's Office. They say basically, they're the attorney for the county attorney, who's the attorney for the assessor, so they have no authority to do anything. So our only choice is to go in on a writ of mandamus for what's occurred for the last three to four years. But we know it's still continuing this year, and at any time they want to question me, I can hand them, Johnson Brothers is the first one, which is the visit, biggest example of what they've been doing wrong with the property record files.
Okay, all right. Well, we will continue. I know there was a meeting that you mentioned that you had. I think Commissioner Boyle, you were there. And so all of these issues were kind of put out there and, and were, I, I mean, pretty much, I think they're pretty resolvable, I think.
Well, let me ask you. Absolutely, I think Mr. Bowman presents a case, and I, I, I don't, there's nothing intentional about it, but it has a, and the assessor, I think, is acting in good faith. But, you know, one of the things, I'll just tell you something that kind of maybe gives you a snapshot of, of how people feel about government in general, and maybe the assessment of property in particular, and not in the, against any individual. But I was at a neighborhood meeting, and there were politicians there, elected officials and state senators and so forth, and they came around to me and asked me, "Well, what's going on in the county?" And I said, "Well," I said, "if you see an unmarked car driving through your neighborhood, head for the basement, pull the blinds, head for the basement, it's the county assessor." And everyone laughed at, I'm sorry, at your expense, Roger, but it's one of the fears that people have of, I mean, I'm sorry. And then when this sort of thing happens, it really does have a chilling effect. But again, in defense of Mr. Morrissey and his office, I think they've, they've been complying. I think this, first, this time out, there was, the form could have been a lot better. I do think that some changes need to be made, that I'm sure the assessor's office is willing to make, so that the process runs a little more smoothly. I'm, I'm real concerned about the burden of repeatedly, you know, like supplying the information and then not having it available when you go in to talk and so forth, and I can understand the volume and all the rest of it. But I just think there, that's something that could be tweaked a little bit. But I do think the assessor needs to have a chance to, having listened to what you said and what you said at the meeting recently, I think we need to ask him, you know, what, what he thinks should be done or could be done. And one of the other things that I'll say kind of editorially, is that it's my opinion that we haven't funded the assessor's office adequately, but that's my opinion. I've always been a strong supporter of some of the things that he's wanted to do, and he's, and the people he needs and so forth. And there's just a disagreement over that, but I'm, I'm on his side in the funding. So, and I think he needs, that office needs more to accomplish some of these things. So that's what I think. But I don't, I think, I agree with Commissioner Borges, and this is all doable. These are things that need to be recognized and changed, and I appreciate your presenting it in such a clear and eloquent manner. It's helpful.
The other thing I wanted to add, Mike, and I wanted to thank you for bringing it up on the budget, and this was something that was brought up during the Senate hearings, and I know that it may be considered when the offices go through the merger starting next year. They did draft this and used Lancaster County as their model.
Right.
They've had this for 12 years. They've been merged there. The preliminaries and so on have been in place there for about four or five years. They've been very successful by doing it this way. They addressed that issue specifically about the budgeting, and I also agree, is that they have a way, that they set a budget in Lancaster County, which is completely different than the way it is done here in Douglas County. And that if they looked at that model a little closer, it would probably get them closer to the budget that they should be at for the assessor's office.
Well, I, and Mr. Morrissey has pointed this out often, and I remember it, that, you know, the number of properties they have in Lincoln versus the number we have in Douglas County. I mean, the cost, the expenditure that's budgeted to handle all that valuation, all the rest of it, is tremendously lower in Douglas.
Yeah.
So that's something that needs to be, you know, and unfortunately, Roger's been pounding the table, and he'll be leaving in January, so, but, you know, you've pounded something in my head, so, and Diane is here to hear the, hear it too.
Yeah, the only thing that is, I guess, our really main concern, that we really have to be, that I've got from the property owners that I'm representing right now, is that when this does come up, and we're within 30 days of the confession of judgment, that we are not back through the assessor's office, that some way or another, they do get an opportunity at that referee. This is the one thing that they were, that they missed, and this is the most adamant point to this for this year that needs to be corrected, is that when they start the confession of judgment, they have a chance at those referees.
Do, excuse me. Do you see that as resolving this problem?
Yes.
Okay, and I assume we don't.
Well, I, I'm assuming by that time, we're done with the referee process. So we've already, if I'm understanding it right, you've gone to the referee, then it's come to the Board of Equalization for approval, and then it's gone on to the state.
But confession of judgment would also go to Board of Equalization for final approval as well.
Right, but it's already passed. I guess we would have to talk about that, of how we would bring back our.
Well, Commissioner.
Referees during that.
Can I add, can I add something? Is that Mary Ann?
Patrick?
Okay. What would happen is, an appeal would be filed with Turk. That appeal will be handled by the county attorney's office. They'll consult with the assessor. They'll also consult with the referee coordinator. I don't see any reason why the referee cannot also be consulted with, because the referee's the one that reviewed the case. The confession of judgment is not necessarily something that's going to occur. What will happen is, after the referee coordinator and possibly the referee review all the information, including that information that was not allowed at the referee hearing, then the county attorney can make a recommendation to the county board and executive session, Board of Equalization executive session, on whether or not to confess judgment or to proceed to the Turk hearing. But what we're not, we can't have is another referee hearing with a protester.
But I, I guess that that's, this is where I'm getting, to me, we're, we're making the taxpayer jump through multiple hoops to get to the same people that were dealing with the case back in the beginning. So there has to be, and maybe it's showing or allowing, or making sure that all of the quote "new" information is being used, and that you have access to all the property file information that resolves the issue. Because here's, I don't understand, if it can't be resolved through the normal process, now all of a sudden, because you filed at Turk and a summary of, what's it called? Confession?
Of judgment.
Of judgment is filed, now all of a sudden, we all want to come back to the table and talk about a settlement? I mean, that's, I have an issue with that, and so.
That's been a normal procedure every year.
I know it has been. I know, because Turk actually asked us to pay for mediation to help them get rid of a bunch of their cases. So I'm thinking that if we work as a Board of Equalization on that front-end process, we may not have that back-end process.
And that's what they're talking about.
Right.
And they, they mentioned that in the legislative hearing specifically, is that if we can get all of this, that's why the informal, and that's why that's the very first thing, because that's going to really save everybody the big headache in the future. It's going to cut down on everybody's budgets.
Right, okay.
I have one other.
Okay.
Well, last week, the county board, without any fanfare, I believe, because I looked at it, in the Board of Equalization, reduced the property tax, actually the money that was received, correct me if I'm wrong, from Mutual of Omaha, because Turk found against us. And I think we approved over a million dollars to be returned to Mutual of Omaha. Now, if, if we can do that last week, I don't know why we can't do, do something for the grocery store on Locust.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan?
I just wondered if Roger, Morrissey, or Mr. Goodwelly wanted to respond, if they
Roger Morrissey, Douglas County Assessor. First of all, nobody should be intimidated to come into the office. I've been available to anybody that's called and people to come in. The system has worked, in my opinion. We can always make it better, but about 50% of the people that come to the Board of Equalization get some type of change. And of those that file at Turk, about 50% also do get some type of change when we meet with the individual property owner at the property. And most of the time, a lot of those are condition issues. As far as unmarked cars, the assessor does not have any unmarked cars.
It was a bad joke.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't understand.
I know, I, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have made it. True good laugh.
So, you know, nobody should feel that they're, that they're targeted, and I've encouraged everybody to take their case to the Board of Equalization when we've agreed to disagree. As far as not giving any consideration, Mr. Bowman keeps bringing up one specific property, which is the remodeled Ramada Inn on 72nd Grover Street, of which he's filed a protest. And he says, "I didn't give any consideration because we had on our record that it did have a swimming pool." And yes, it did have a swimming pool, and that was removed, but then a water park was installed there too. Mr. Bowman is protesting a value down to, I believe, $4 million, and talks about how bad the hotel industry is. Well, there's just a recent article in the World Herald by Cindy Gonzalez, how hot it is and how many more hotels are being built. And as part of our evidence to the Board of Equalization, we included a article that the Ramada renovation sparks revival of hotel district. And it says part, I'll read from the article, "Part of the $30 million renovation included replacing an old pool and miniature golf course with a modern bar surrounded by an indoor wasserloo." indoor water feature. The developer says we stripped it down to the bone. We have all-new plumbing, carpeting, electrical, everything. New, new, new. Our assessment value was 18 million and change. They put $30 million in it." As far as me saying that I didn't consider, I didn't consider that pool to be measurable in my evaluation, and that was, he's taken my comment out of context on that. We, as the assessor's office, had initial meetings with Senator Cornet, Senator Campbell on the informal hearings. I pushed for that. I supported that. I felt that it was a good way to get things out in the open. I think Mr. Bowman's issue here is the way that his formal hearing was held, and that he was unable to give any evidence, and that's his complaint. That's with the board. That's not with the assessor's office. That was your policy. That was your decision, not the assessor's decision. As far as property record cards, there was a complaint filed with the Attorney General's Office, and the county attorney addressed that, and we are in compliance with open I'm not here to make a big argument, but I'm here to clear some things up, and our office is always open and will continue to be open. And there are times that we agree to disagree with a property owner, and we encourage them to follow the process and go to a hearing down at the State Tax Equalization or Review Commission. Mike, anything?
Thank you, Roger.
Roger, I have one question though, because I think what I heard Mr. Bowman say is that he was having trouble with that new evidence at both places. At the informal, when he went in for the informal hearing, it wasn't being used, and when he came to the referee. Now, maybe I misunderstood and wrote it wrong.
I believe, and you can ask Mr. Bowman, the way I understand it, he did provide evidence at the informal hearing on that motel and several others, that you did bring it in. And that on his formal, when he filed with the formal hearing...
That evidence was gone.
When he filed with the Board of Equalization, then it says, on his valuation protest, says we'll present, it says, "A change in assessed valuation is requested for the following reasons. We'll present at the hearing same as informal information given to the assessor February 2014 and on-site inspection." And that was the evidence he submitted to the board that was given to the referee. And then I understand Mr. Bowman brought in additional information that he'd given to us at that time with the referee, and they did not accept it. Now, that wasn't my decision. Am I correct on that, that they did not accept your documentation and just went off basically what we submitted and then said you didn't submit anything?
Okay, that's our form. Okay, good. Okay, so that's us. So then the property file, though, you said that you had an Attorney General's opinion or a county attorney's opinion?
I'll let Teresa address that because she handled that as far as property records.
I guess I just want a bottom-line answer is, are we giving the property owner all of our information that we're using to come up with that assessment?
Teresa?
Teresa here at County Attorney's Office. Mr. Bowman filed a complaint with the Attorney General's Office concerning public records. That's one of the methods that a requister can go through if they think that they've requested X and they haven't been given X. The Attorney General's Office looked at the complaint and said that the county assessor's office was in compliance, and they believe that the records that requested X, believed that those records were in fact given. He was given X. And I believe Mr. Bowman was kind enough to provide a copy of that opinion in your packet, and it's from December of 2013.
Okay, so, but you're saying you're not getting the information?
Absolutely not. And at any time you want, what we can show, and like I said, if we can take and pull one specifically and provide it to the board, it's costing us $10 every time we go get another assessment report. Johnson Brothers Screen Printing alone, if you take and compare the property record file and look at the assessment report, they are not anywhere near the same.
Okay.
They're not.
All right.
And we can show, I can probably bring in about 63 different examples that we have ran into over the last three years where this has been the exact same situation.
I guess I just don't understand why we wouldn't, so I guess I'll just continue to work internally on that issue, but, okay.
And just a couple of things that Mr. Morrissey brought up, I wanted to clarify. We didn't ask for a value of 4.5. The value was 5.3 million, I believe, that we had requested for the Ramada. He had brought up an article that talked about a $30 million renovation. This is a property that sold at a normal arms-length transaction because the last management had ran the place in the dirt since the Cocoa Water Park had been put in eight to nine years prior. Now, that swimming pool had been there and had been there before the water park, and it was only two or three years ago that the swimming pool was taken out. When the renovations occurred, nothing but the water park has been touched. It still has patched concrete, which we showed them. They have pictures and all the samples. It needs a lot of work for the park. The convention center, there's been no renovations or changes. The $30 million was mostly to bring it up code compliant. It did not meet for plumbing. It did not meet for electrical. It did not meet for security. All of these had to be code compliant, brought up. Then renovations were actually made, and the renovations were minor compared to what had to be done. They took out that swimming pool. They did put in that rock garden. A million-dollar swimming pool, I know they didn't put a million dollars into the rock garden. The only thing else with the restaurant, it had to be gutted because it was in bad shape. It was rebuilt. That's it. There's not $30 million put into the whole park. They painted the outside. It needed it. They've done very little with the rest of it whatsoever. There's not that much money put into the park. He mentioned a putt-putt, I don't even know about a putt-putt golf, because as far as I know, there's never been one there. And what he did say, it is correct as far as, but all it is, is the form is what basically is what caused the confusion during the referee hearings. It's just that there was a confusion there. The Attorney General argument, that basically, anytime they want to take and see if we're correct or not, we will provide those, but it would have to be the board making sure we don't have to pay for these all over again to get the property record file and to get the assessment report. We will provide as many samples as you want to show that these were not the same. We had built an argument based on that property record file, and when we sat down in front of that referee, we were not looking at the same argument.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
That's exactly where, and if they want those examples, I can take and email those to them. You can get through, Daniel Esch is where those records come from downstairs. But for us to build those all over again, we're looking at $10 for every assessment, and then we have a certain cost for every one of the property record files again. And we keep reproducing these. If they don't use them or consider them, they're gone. Then we have to go get them again. We've been doing this over and over again. And that's what we're looking at again here at the referee hearings. We provided all this to them. It's gone. They throw it away. Now, I've got to go reproduce this all over again.
Okay.
And that's where we're going to the third stage. And it gets a little expensive. We've been doing this over and over for the last four years.
Man, okay.
And that's where the people are getting frustrated and don't want to keep going.
Okay. All right. Gotcha. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I'd like to ask Roger if he could come to the podium, and how do we address this, what he's just talked about, about the information being destroyed? I can't imagine the paper load that you have, but can you explain that to me? I'm sure it's a valid reason, but...
Well...
Yeah?
This is, we have hundreds and thousands of protests, and we have all this paperwork brought in. There's nothing to say that we're to keep it...
Right.
And pass it down. I guess if the homeowner said, "I want it back," we'd give it back to him.
Okay, is that, does that sound like a solution, do you think?
It would be, but that's not, it's never been an option. We don't know. As far as we know, they're going to look at it and take it into consideration. What we're looking at is trying to figure out if they're going to, some of these are certified appraisals. We're going back and getting copies of these appraisals all over again. We've done this three times.
Well, we can't do that. Well, let me ask you, Roger, is that if someone like Mr. Bowman just routinely asks for all the paperwork back, is there any problem with custody or chain of command or anything like you'd, is there some way you can mark those documents so you know that, I mean, he's not going to do it?
Save things that Mr. Bowman brought in? We could do that.
Yeah, so that, you know, so that he couldn't, not that he's going to, but someone else insert information that you didn't see that, you know, is there some way to mark those documents before you give them back to a taxpayer? So that you know that what you are giving back is what you received, is my point? Does it make any difference to you, or do you need to do that?
No, we don't need them after, that's what I'm saying. If we can hold everything Mr. Bowman brings in in the future and keep them in a box and give them to him in March.
Let me ask you this question. If he is going to be talking further about those individual properties, and he's presented a document to you, you have no concern, not that you're going to do it, but somebody else, would insert information in there that you did not see? It's kind of a chain of command kind of thing, where you have this, you make a decision based on that document that you got, and then see. So this taxpayer takes that document back, and then to mess with you, maybe puts in a document that makes his or her case stronger?
Well, no, then he's going to have to submit it, he's going to have to submit it to the referee. And he could submit additional things.
Okay, fine.
He can submit additional things after...
Okay, good.
Yeah, well, we've got no problem.
That's not a problem. That's what we're doing anyway, because if we get the information back, what we're trying to find out is why was it not taken into consideration?
Right.
If it was not taken into consideration, maybe we didn't have enough information, so then we can supplement the information we already have...
Good, yes, I understand that.
Without having to completely reproduce everything.
Okay. Well, I think that may be a solution, if just automatically, you know, in the future, do that for a taxpayer who requests it, and I guess maybe it'd be a nice way to get rid of the paper, tell them that, you know, just ask, you can have it back.
The only time they keep the information is if they take your information into consideration. That's the only time that they keep the information. That's what they basically explained to us during those informal hearings. Well, if they're not going to take it into consideration, it's obvious we're going to file a protest, so we should get the information back.
Right, okay.
That should be a general rule for everybody. You should have an opportunity so you don't have to rebuild the case. All you have to do is supplement it and add to it, so when you're ready to do your BOE hearings, you've got all the information, and you can add to it as you go.
And one last thing?
Let me ask you this, then.
Go ahead.
You're going to do the same thing at the formal hearings, when your referee looks at information, and then you're going to have your referee hold information and tell the property owner what wasn't considered in their opinion? So when they go forward to Turk, then the property owner has that information too?
Those are in the referee notes. They've taken, say, exactly specifically what they took into consideration and what they did not take into consideration. Those are always benefits.
Then you're not concerned with that?
Nope.
Well, that'd be a good deal. All right?
Okay.
Okay, hey, thanks a lot. Thank you all.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, September 16, 2014, and Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, September 23, 2014.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Tom?
Madam Chair, members of the County Board of Commissioners, Tom Kavanaugh, Douglas County Clerk, 1819 Farnham. Just want to say, I really appreciate all the efforts you have all put in. This is an important day on transparency and accountability for our taxpayers, because the exceptions that have for years appeared on your agenda for payments for dot-com are no longer going to be there because you, specifically the Chair Borgeson and Commissioner Tusha's persistent work on getting dot-com to develop an accountability system that will serve not only the taxpayers of Douglas County, but will serve management and the officials of Douglas County for more transparency, accountability, and efficiency. And I just wanted to express our appreciation for your efforts in doing this, for being able to account for over $6 million in tax dollars annually, and today before you, without exceptions, is a bill for over a half a million. So thank you and appreciate the work.
Thank you, Tom. And a good work from everybody. And as the saying goes, good things come to those who wait, right?
Right.
Please vote. Hope Mr. Boyle...
Well, I was just going to say, talk about persistence. You know, we need to give some of the credit, quite a bit of the credit, to Mr. Kavanaugh, who first presented those claims, as he did on the agenda, but also spoke many times about the need for this. But I appreciate the cooperation that popped up and took place in looking at this objectively and saying something needs to change. And I really congratulate Commissioner Borgeson and Commissioner Tusha for getting this handled, and also for Mr. Kavanaugh for bringing it to our attention so frequently. Thank you.
Team member. Yep, absolutely. Please vote. Next is the consent agenda, items A through M, for a total of 13 items.
Motion approved.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Next, we'll move to citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chambers wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda? Next, we'll move to committees, the first being the Finance. Commissioners Morgan and Duda, do you have anything other than the budget report?
Just as presented.
Okay, great. Child and youth, there is one item to enter into an agreement with Douglas County Youth Center in Ivory Woods, the Systems Administrator for the Douglas County Youth Center Education Program, and to meet the requirement of Title 92 Nebraska Department Education, Chapter 18, in providing educational services and program supervision to juveniles detained at the youth center.
Motion second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Next is the Human Resources Committee, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented, unless there's questions or comments. Next is the weekly CAL report on staff assault.
Nothing to report.
And then legislative issues. Just an update, which you already all know, that the hearing on the GAL took place last Friday. I testified. It was good testimony in front of the Judiciary, Joint Judiciary and Health and Human Services Committee, and so we'll probably be hearing more about that in the near future. Other than that, Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I went flying through the consent agenda so fast, I apologize, but I would like to record my vote on Item A as no instead of yes.
Okay.
I think it's not a good plan.
For the record, changing Commissioner Boyle's vote from yes to no on Item A for consent agenda.
Yes.
All right. We do have need for an executive session for litigation and real estate litigation, negotiations. Is there a motion to vote?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Please vote. Also, as we go into executive session, please note that there's an Administrative Services Committee meeting immediately following the county board in Room 903. And then at 2 o'clock, there is a Community Services Committee in Room 903 as well. And then there's a special meeting on September 25 at 1:30 at the Washington County Courthouse. That is where we will discuss with the Washington County Board of Supervisors, the interlocal agreement before us with the NRD for dam site 15A near 168th and Ford Street.
Commissioner Morgan? Motion passes.
And we'll give about eleven fifteen and up to nine oh three for the acting committee.
Can we do it a little longer and get some time?
Okay, you want to do eleven thirty then?
Can we?
Okay.
Motion passes.
With brotherhood, come see to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, for...